All too quiet.
We're all waiting for that 6:30.
I usually have to yell to get people to shut up.
All right, seeing as how it's 6:30, we'll get the Oregon Plan Commission meeting started. Could I have a call to order and then a roll call?
Van Kampen?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Vano?
Here.
Mozan?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Holda?
Here.
And we have Schnelly and Smith back excused tonight.
Excellent. Seeing as how we have quorum, we'll keep moving. Before I move on in the agenda, I see we have a new face. Somebody want to introduce themselves and give us a little dog and pony?
Hi, my name is Rich Cosia. I'm the new civil engineer for the Village of Oregon. I come from the 115th Fighter Wing. I've been working there the last four years on the conversion from the F-16 aircraft to the F-35, dealing with the conversion of all the infrastructure and the hangars that go into that. It's pretty substantial. But now that we're wrapping up, they told me to find other gainful employment. So luckily, I saw the job posting and here I am. So looking forward to working with all of you.
Excellent. Thanks, Rich. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Appreciate that.
Moving on the agenda, item three is the approval of minutes for August 14th. Is there a motion to approve?
Some will.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please note, I will abstain because I wasn't here. Item four, public appearances. Before we go into this and I make my comments, I just wanted to let the public know that item A, 7A and 7L have been postponed, and those two are the splash pad and the senior living. So if you're here for those events or those topics, you're happy to stick around, but they won't be discussed. They keep your eye out for future agenda items or future Plan Commission agendas, and they'll be up there. With that being said, this is the time when we allow for community input. So this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Plan Commission, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, this agenda item allows the Commission to receive information and to ask questions of the presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters related to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff or placed on a future Commission agenda. However, the Commission members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Fifteen minutes are provided for this item, and we please ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes or less if you are going to come up and do that. If there are people that are here for an item that is on the public appearances, you're welcome to speak now. You're also welcome to speak during the agenda item itself. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on an item on the agenda or not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll keep moving. Item five, communications and miscellaneous business, we have none. Item six is unfinished business. We don't have any, and we will move on to new business. As I mentioned, item 7A, which is the Oregon Splash Pad, has been asked to be postponed. That will come up in a future agenda. Item B, review and possible recommendation to the Village Board for a certified survey map at 550 and 560 North Burr Oak Avenue. Applicant is Joseph, and I'm going to get this wrong, Vol.
You got it right.
Hey! Joseph, would you like to come up and give us a little bit of background, please?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Vol. You got it right. Thank you very much. It's few and far between that that happens, but I recently purchased 550 North Burr Oak, which is the Forrester Electrical Engineering Building. And I was previously in front of the Planning Commission about splitting off the lower parcel which was purchased. I had spoken with Pam Rochine and Mike Rochine, who own Rochine Property Storage to the north, and they expressed some interest in purchasing the vacant land that's in between, or the strip of land that's in between. So I had a survey done as well with the outlot one, or I'm sorry, I don't remember. The side lot, and they expressed interest in purchasing that. So seeking approval of that lot line adjustment or the opportunity to parcel that off.
All right. Thank you. Elise, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this beyond your letter?
Just to note, I know that the Rochines are looking at some different options for redevelopment of that lot. I was reached out to a contractor who had some questions about the general industrial zoning district and setbacks and things over there. And of course, they're aware that if there's any kind of new buildings added, there might be some either zoning changes and/or a site plan review. So I would imagine that would come forward at a later meeting once they have a plan in front of them. But yes, like Joe said, just the lot line adjustment so they can have that additional grassy area for redevelopment of their lot to the north.
Thank you. So to be clear, this is just purely for the CSM, no future use, no future zoning, nothing. With that being said, is there anybody that would like to make a positive or negative recommendation? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 7C, this is actually kind of a combination of C, D and E, but we're going to take them one at a time. The first one is a review and possible recommendation to the Village Board of a certified survey map at 219 Park Street to provide parcels for the new Oregon Area Senior Center. Applicant is the Village of Oregon. Elise, you want to give us a little background on this, please?
Sure. I'll get a little background, and obviously, these next three items are related to each other. So kind of tee them up, but you all have seen the progress of our new senior center project coming along. The last meeting, we did a a motion to vacate a portion of Waterman Street between Brook and Park Street. So that would be part of that CSM. In addition to the other parcels, the village owns the former post office, the former library, current senior center, and then a small kind of parking area next to the senior center. So the CSM combines all of those areas into one parcel for the new project. The GDP is the zoning request. We can get to that later, but this is central business zoning. It's the base zoning district, so the flexibilities are requested from that downtown district. And then the SIP, the site plan element, I know that they have were charged to address a lot of the comments that were raised. And all of the team here reintroduced themselves and kind of talked through how they've addressed some of those, as well as the justification for the zoning setbacks as well. So I'm not sure if you want to have kind of the whole spiel before you go through all the motions for each of the three, or just focus on the CSM right now?
Yeah, good question. I guess what I'd like to do is not to confuse the matter further. Let's just take these one at a time, and let's do the CSM first. And then when we get to the planning and the zoning and the site plan approval, we can take one of those, we can take those when they come up. So with that being said, let us ask, do you have anything to add to the CSM?
Yes. Yep, there was, we received from our consulting village engineer, all of the CSM-related review letters just shortly before the Planning Commission packet had to be published. So there's a couple minor comments actually on all of the CSMs, nothing substantial more labeling and things like that. So those will be addressed before this moves forward to the Village Board.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? Pretty straightforward. We've seen it before. Anybody?
I would move to recommend to the Village Board the certified survey map as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Patrick, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item D, which is the public hearing and consideration of a recommendation to the Village Board on a proposed general development plan for the new Oregon Area Senior Center at 219 Park Street. Applicant is the Village of Oregon. We'll start by having staff and consultant report. Elise, you're up.
Okay. Sorry, I'm scrolling through all of the pages. I was trying to find the CSM, but you guys got to it before I found the page. So I guess I'll let Brett kind of talk through some of the justification, but just to highlight again for you all. So central business, downtown zoning does not have an off-street parking requirement. Obviously, that was an element that was important to this project, so there is parking included off-street here. Most of the flexibilities are related to, again, kind of senior-specific design. So one-story building, downtown, we want to see the buildings right up against the sidewalk and just due to wanting to have some landscaping, other displacement of the building. The building setback a bit there. Some of the lighting, parking lot design, and then the buffer yard, I think those are kind of the main areas just to talk through. But you had recommending approval contingent on the the vacation of Waterman Street getting finalized. Obviously, that kind of determines the parcel and the CSM getting reported as well. Those are kind of the two conditions of approval for this one. I'll hand it over to Brett.
Thank you. So I guess maybe we'll just take these kind of one at a time in the packet that we provided. We tried to say what's required versus what we're proposing. I'll kind of step through those. So the first one was the minimum and maximum story requirement of two-story, being the minimum and maximum being the three-story. What we're proposing is a single-story, yes. The northern portion of the building is essentially a two-story volume. And the reason that it is important that this building is a single-story is because of the use type. So we did study actually doing a two-story building with the program and everything, but it kept coming back in discussions with the staff, with Rachel. The challenge is not only of operating a facility of that, you have to increase the amount of staff that you have in order to adequately support both the first main story as well as a second story there. The other is the patrons. So we would probably need multiple elevators to accommodate people moving throughout the building, as well as a stair just inherently comes with more risk for individuals that may have trouble with mobility. Quite a, or patrons that are visiting this facility may have walkers, wheelchairs, things to assist them in their everyday life. So that becomes challenging when you start traversing multiple stories. So ultimately, we decided to look at a single-story building. And then what we tried to do was in in honor of the code, was to position a two-story volume to the northern portion of the property. So it starts to continue that line that you would expect to see as other development happens around it, so that it's not a single-story next to future two to three stories. It will visually look like a two-story. And the northern portion of that is where that gym is located. So the height of that is 37 feet, so it is a rather tall volume that is there. It then slopes back down towards the south where there are residents and things like that. So we viewed it as a good compromise from where you would expect to see a higher volume back to the west, down to a more residential scale that is to the east. And that allowed for that, that volume of a taller volume down to a single-story. I would note that our single-story is still rather tall because we do have mezzanines and things like that for mechanicals that we're using to disperse through the space. And that, so yeah, we're trying to use the volume. It's not just empty space. We're using that to disperse mechanicals and things through, throughout the building. Maximum building size, there was no requirement on that. Maximum building height, it's 45 to 20. I touched on that. The northern portion of the building is 37 at its highest, so along the northern property line there. Setbacks, the max is zero. The reason that we decided to investigate pulling the building off the sidewalk that is there is a couple reasons. One, at that time, we needed an exit stair to get out of the gym. We needed a second exit out of there. And then two, that is a fairly tall portion of the building that is 37 feet. So to have a very short, narrow sidewalk, not narrow, but to have a sidewalk then go straight into a building felt very abrupt to us. So we felt like it was more responsive to pull it away from that sidewalk that's there to give a little green space that is there. That stair, however, that we are using, we have currently designed to bring that inboard because it was very dominant on the exterior of the building. So if you scroll maybe to the next, trying to, there's an elevation to the north. While that's loading. It, on the northern portion of the building, there was a large concrete stair for exiting out of that. As we were designing, the decision was made to bring that inboard so that we, yeah, right there in the middle of the facade. So you've got this cream-colored brick with these large windows and then a concrete stair that's right there. It felt, one, from a cost standpoint, to build that stair was not going to be cheap. So the decision was made to bring that inboard, one, to help the facade, but then also from a cost measure as well. On-site parking, zero is required by the zoning code. But for this use, it is imperative that seniors have the ability to park on-site with fairly easy access to the main entrance. So a part of that, we have shown wider stalls than typical. We're showing 10-foot stalls as opposed to what we would typically draw. And part of that is just being able to adequately open your door, get out of it, and without hitting an adjacent car or anything like that. Like I mentioned, a lot of people are going to be using walkers or assistive devices to get out of their cars. So that is why we went with a wider stall, which is standard practice for senior centers. We also chose to do a walk aisle between the noses of the cars. And that is related to safety. So we don't want to encourage people to be walking down the aisles because there are going to be cars moving there. Again, senior center or seniors driving cars, we want to remove pedestrian from cars as much as possible. So we have these aisles between the, between the noses of the cars that allow you to get to and adjacent to the building to then get to the front door. One other comment that was mentioned was the site lighting. So the zoning code has a requirement of an average of 2.4 across the average across the site. The specialist that we work with that specializes in senior center design would like to see that much higher. We understand that there's, there's a reason for this. We don't want to spill light out onto adjacent properties. But it really is for those later months in the, in the winter, a safety issue for seniors as they approach the building. We did provide some alternatives if we're not able to achieve that or come to a reconciliation on that. If we could install occupancy sensors or something like that that would glow for people as they're coming from their car to the front door and then dim back down. So it'd be bright intermittently. Let's see, yeah, so there was aisle ends or the, yeah, the ends of the islands there, there's a requirement of a 400 square foot max, minimum on those. We are showing smaller islands there, but they are currently drawn at eight feet wide. And that is really to make sure that we're providing enough space for trees to grow in those green spaces. So it is less, but they are still pretty substantial. And I think if we combined them where we're doing a walk aisle between, that number would go up of what the average number is. The buffer yard to residence is 15 feet. So there's a solid fence that is required along shared property lines. Currently, that's on the west property line where that would want to be put. Right now, we are trying to maximize the parking on-site. So it's becoming very challenging to have that fence and that driveway right next to each other. And that is really just, it's tied to the amount of parking that we have on-site there. With that, I want to make sure I covered all the...
Brett, do you mean the east or the west side with the adjoining neighbors?
Yeah, sorry, I was meant to talk about the east on that. So on the east side where Waterman is, currently, there's a decent break between our building and the adjacent properties. We are planning to have plenty of greenery around that space, so there will be a nice buffer. There's also the stormwater retention that's along that side. So we're trying to maximize the use of that space, drain water. There's a lot going on in that area. I think that, does that cover all the questions?
Yeah, it's just the flexibility.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we will open the public hearing. Are there any people here from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will have a discussion with the Plan Commission. Is there anybody from the Plan Commission that has questions of the village or of the applicant and staff?
Yeah, I have a few questions, but I want to go back to what you talked about with the fence and just make sure I understand that. You said west property boundary.
I meant east.
So you're talking about a fence between the residential properties to the east?
Well, and I think we maybe talked about this at the conceptual meeting to the screening requirement. We typically see either as a fence or as landscaping, and I feel like we typically, you all typically recommend landscaping. It helps it better over time. It's more neighborly. It just needs to meet that same kind of opacity that you would have with a fence. So a thick landscaping buffer there. The flexibility being requested is typically you would have a 15-foot buffer yard, so 15 feet of green space in addition to that. The basin kind of functions as some of that green space, but further south, you just have that additional parking area that's in Waterman Street, so not able to accommodate that buffer yard. So the flexibility is just requesting to have a fence and/or landscaping to serve as that screening there.
Yeah, because the top half of that east border, you, like you said, you have that buffer area to the north. But then you have a garage where they have, I see they have access to that garage. So really, there's, there's nothing to screen there, and you can't screen across that driveway. So I, I would, again, prefer vegetation to a fence as much as possible. If you need it on the south half of the eastern boundary, I could understand that. But boy, I hate to see just put a wall there. It's not very appealing.
So I was going to try to sit back and not talk, but I can't help myself. So I'm Jeff By and the owner's rep. I've been working with OPN and the civil engineer during design. So just to clarify, if you're looking at that drawing where you see the parking stalls that when somebody drives in, the front of their car is facing east, in those areas, we are planning on having a fence. And because we don't have enough property there, we can't accomplish it with landscaping. So in those areas, we would have a fence. And that neighbor actually prefers that we do have a fence so that the lights aren't shining in the windows. To the north of that, basically, once you get past that gray parking area, that area, that area, we would accomplish the screen with landscaping. And the feels who own the property to the, to the east on that north side, they would prefer the landscaping. So we would use a landscaping buffer where we can, where you can see it on the landscape plan here. And then down where the parking is, we'd be forced to just have a fence. So we've got to come up with a good aesthetic solution for that fence.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, I would be concerned about headlights shining in, although I would say, again, the northern half of where you're talking about fencing is the garage and kind of backyard area.
Right. I think it's because we just don't have enough room for landscaping. But if you look at the landscape plan, you can see that the, you know, at least 50% of that property line on the north will be landscaping instead of a fence.
Okay. So I do have a few questions on the site plan, and then if we can get into the design, I have some questions there. On that site plan, which is, I'm looking at page 32 of my packet, which was just the two-dimensional plan, you have a dumpster location on the southeast corner. Yep. Right where your cursor is. Those are dumpsters, I take it, right?
Correct.
Is that the optimal location from a functional standpoint of a truck driving in to empty those dumpsters? From a use standpoint of staff having to haul the garbage from the senior center, would it not make more sense to move those dumpsters to the end of that drive aisle, straight north to the end of the drive aisle next to that retention basin?
We'd have to discuss that with JSD, but we went around and around with where that's at. And they've studied truck movements and being able to get in and out. And the way that the truck that would pick up these dumpsters, it needs to get in there, but then it, it needs to be able to get out.
Sure.
And so we wouldn't want to have it at the end of that dead end, and then it would have to try to figure out how to back its way out of there. So it is set up that they can get into the dumpsters, turn and then, and drive out.
Is that a side-load truck?
No, it's the front.
It's a front load. See, what I saw is your traffic aisle is opposite of how they would load. So that seems kind of awkward.
Yes, but at least it's been proven to work versus when we tried to put it other places, we couldn't figure out how to get the truck.
Okay.
In and out. So it's, it's not optimal, but it's, it's the solution that we came up with that works.
Okay. On the north part of the property on the street, it says, remove the overhead electrical. Is that intended to go underground or is it just?
Correct.
Okay, good. Regarding the oversized parking stalls, I do like that. As you were talking, when I read it, I liked it. As you're talking about it, the thought occurred to me of Costco. If you've ever been to a Costco, they double stripe. And so a little more cost, but something to maybe look at because it really does help people center in the stall. So I just wanted to share that comment.
It's a good idea.
Regarding the exterior lighting, I'm all in favor of the sensor-controlled occupancy lighting. So when not... So when not needed, come down with your foot candles. So all of those things are very positive to me. I've got more on the design. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. So a question I had, we'll jump up to page forty-one of the packet. And the question I had is, was solar ever a consideration? I didn't see any solar on the building. It looks like it could be optimal for solar. Is it a cost issue or was it just?
We didn't note it, but it's part of the development budget and it's part of the project plan. So, and it, so if we look at the footprint of the building, the best place for it to be is actually on the, the single story portion of the building. So we can get the panels tilted straight south.
Yeah.
So we're going to maximize that area. And then if we can afford more panels, we would even put panels on the roof of the gym. So right now, the electrical engineer is studying how many panels we can get on the lower roof. And what that cost might be. And I think that's probably where we're going to land.
Sure.
But.
I would add regardless, typically we'll design the structure to handle it. So even if it can, it doesn't happen in this project, it could happen at a future phase.
Good, good to hear. I'm no expert on senior centers, but I've had the opportunity, opportunity to tour two very nice senior centers in the past year. Wanakee has a very nice senior center and then Peoria, Arizona. Both of those senior centers, what stood out to me was a second story walking track. So they had a gymnasium and a mezzanine where it was used for, for walking, indoor walking. And so when I saw the initial elevations, I was excited that that could be a possibility. I understand the idea of not wanting to go more than one story for cost, for elevators, for access. But I just wanted to share that that was a feature that really stood out to me. And if it at all were a possibility, I would love to see something like that incorporated.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Wanakee and the senior center is on first floor and their gym floor is actually on the lower level. So you can get to that walking mezzanine on first floor.
Right, right.
On a single story facility, the, the second level of the gym is actually in the basement. So it would be difficult for us to accomplish that or, you know, that would be the only need for the elevator in this design.
Yeah.
What we do have is the gym is designed so that there's a, a hanging barrier. That cordons off the activity area in the gym and then there is a walking path.
Okay.
That's protected from, you know, people playing pickleball or whatever might be happening in the middle of the gym.
Right, okay. I like your design for the most part. I'm going to talk about materials in a little bit. But the angles make it very interesting. The covered entry, I think, makes a lot of sense. So, so that's a very positive. I did have a question on, you know, the facility is designed to be used on weekends, after hours. Where is that entry? It, it, I couldn't really see from the plans.
Yeah, so the intent right now is that the main entry is through the senior center main entry. And the way that we've designed the vestibule is kind of like the library here. You would come into the main vestibule and then turn left to, to go into the gym. And then there would be a, a partition that would section off the rest of the senior center so that you wouldn't have access.
Is there a floor plan in the packet?
I don't believe so. I was just scrolling through. I don't think we included one.
I think it's all just renderings, yeah.
Yeah, there's access control and, you know, we can show.
Yeah, no, I, I was assuming it had been thought of and I just didn't want to really see a, a separate entry of not, if.
Yeah, we, we looked at it both ways.
How many times?
And ultimately, from a clarity of design, clarity of approach to the building, all of that. It, it felt best to have that single entry like you were talking about.
Okay.
Patrick, just so you know too, along those same lines, there is a space inside that kind of gym entry for a, a desk. So we, we're still kind of trying to determine how that would be staffed after hours. But having somebody there who's aware, who's in the building, making sure folks are safe, that kind of thing. There'd be a desk kind of right through that vestibule and then I believe it's the gym and then potentially another. It's a kind of the.
That multi-use.
The multi-use room could be accessed after hours. So there could be other programming that again would be easily accessed in the rest of the senior center offices, things like that would be inaccessible.
Okay. As I said, I like your design. Where I have an issue with your design, I like the brick. I like the angles. Where I have an issue is the metal panels. They just, it seems industrial. And you're right down the street from the pool, which was, which is synthetic stucco, EFS, whatever you want to call it. Did you ever consider a synthetic stucco instead of the metal panels?
No, we did not look at that. What we're looking at is not just your typical corrugated metal. It's more of like a folded, so you get harsher lines with it and a nice verticality out of it. It's probably not showing up in the rendering quite the way that it would. So it does have a nicer edge to it than what you're thinking, like a corrugated metal or something like that. Stucco is, it can be challenging only because we're doing like more of a rain screen type system everywhere else. And then you've got stucco, so now we've got two very different systems working with each other in there. And so how do we make sure water isn't getting in or infiltrating if one system fails? What does that mean for the other one? So that was, we, we tried not to look at that when we were going this direction with the design with the brick and all of that.
Okay. So I'd really like to see some examples of the metal. You know, before we get too far down the road with it.
So we actually used a very similar metal on the library, not to reference the library too much, but the mechanical. Area that's out there. It's not going to be dark like that, but we used a, it's got the nice lines to it. And it's boxier profile to it.
Okay.
So it'd be very similar to that.
I'll, I'll take a look at that. You mentioned in one of the drawings, an equipment platform. I'm assuming that's like HVAC or handler type stuff.
Yep.
And it sounds like you're going to try to put as much of that inside to hide that.
Very much. Well, for a couple of reasons. One, for durability or for longevity of the equipment, easier to service, all of that. Two, it maximizes the roof area for solar, for solar panels. And now we don't have to do a screen around it for the adjacent properties. So it's kind of a three-way win for us to take advantage of the volume.
Nice. All right, just a couple more things. If we could go to sheet fifty-seven or page fifty-seven. If we can, are we able to zoom in on the roof on the front? And so you have the, this entry with the transparency above it, big white rectangle. To the left of that, it looks like three flagpoles. What, what am I seeing there?
Oh.
Is that just a rendering issue?
A modeling issue.
Okay.
So what we're trying to show, it, it shouldn't show up in the rendering.
Okay.
But it's, it's just us getting water to the, the drains. That's all that is.
Okay. I, I figured it was a rendering issue, but it's like.
We're just gonna have these three mass.
Yeah.
No, no, it's a modeling issue.
Okay, a couple more questions on the renderings, sheet sixty. Right there. You got it. Right, that gym. It looks like clear story windows and is, I, I looked at that a number of times. And I'm reading it now as shadows.
It is shadow.
Okay.
It's a translucent panel, but then now it's a shadow.
That's, that's fine. If they were clear story windows, I was gonna say your proportions are way off.
Are you talking about at the very top?
Right at the very top, yeah.
Translucent panel.
And then one more, sheet sixty-three or page sixty-three, sorry. Looking at the two different facades, the north and the west. I'm assuming it's just a lighting thing. Is there a change of material there? It just seems much different on the west.
No, it's a shadow effect in the rendering, yeah. So we're only using the, the brick, that translucent panel, the metal panel up top. And then we do have that warmer material in with the brick. So it's those materials that are consistent on those facades.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Design is okay. Um, I guess, I, I made this comment the last time and I still kind of feel the same way that. And maybe it's because it's all so light all together. I just feel that it doesn't really feel as modern as I think I would want it to. It kind of has a old timey feel a little bit to me. I actually like this rendering better where the brick is, looks darker on the left side. So there's actually some, I guess, contrast between the white brick and the white panel. I think it kind of looks. I think I called it a school, like a nineteen fifty's school the last time. I still kind of feel like it has that. Maybe the portico is what does it for me over the entry. But I just, I feel like if there was maybe not quite so much light, it might feel not like a big mass. That's how I, when I'm, when I look at it, to me, it looks just kind of like a big white mass in the middle of downtown. I like the roofs that have different angles. I like the idea of the translucent panels. But I don't know if there's a way to, to incorporate something a little bit, to give it a little bit of more texture to me.
Okay, anybody else? Is the brick itself like a wire cut? Does it have any texture to it at all or is it a burnished?
It's not burnished. No, it'll have a little texture to it.
It will have a little. Maybe that will help a little bit to kind of catch some shade and shadow. The only, going through your points, I, I really don't have anything, you've answered all of our concerns. So thank you very much for doing that from all of the feedback that we provided over the time. I think that you've done a very nice job of adequately resolving them. It seems like you've also worked well with the neighbors to kind of give them their sort of split of what they wanted, whether that be a fence or a landscape sort of approach. Regarding the flexibilities that you're asking on the site lighting. The, the step down that you had suggested or the motion sensors, I, I leave that up to staff. I guess the only thing that I would like to see is that you still maintain the point five foot candle at the property line. I think that that's sort of a reasonable still approach. I don't, I have no problem with higher light levels in the middle. But I still have a concern about going over that point five at the property line.
And then. John, if I could just comment on that while you're, while you're mentioning that. We did talk about that. So we've got those bays that are, you know, the main area where we expect seniors to park. The parking that's south of the drive up and the parking on Waterman, those areas are for other uses than the main patrons. So I think we would only be talking about the higher foot candles in the pathway to the building and the rest of it, we would take down.
Excellent.
Yes.
Excellent. And then the buffer yard flexibilities. I again have no problem with giving you the flexibility with a fence as long as you sort of maintain the opacity that's within the zoning requirement. So how you get there, I leave that voodoo up to you. But I think that I don't have any problem with, with the approach that you're suggesting. So those are sort of my feedback. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve contingent upon. The half a foot candle at the site lighting at the property line, opacity being maintained. Patrick, do you want to have any of your?
Nothing that I want to attach. I just wanted to share my feedback and please, you know, take those items into consideration.
Okay. And then the two conditions put forward by the village planner. Anybody want to make that motion? Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item E, review and possible approval of a specific implementation plan for the new Oregon area senior center. At two nineteen Park Street, applicant is the village of Oregon. Elise, you just kind of want to step us in from where we are to this, please?
So yes, obviously the, the S I P gets down to the site level. So some of those comments about color, brick type, that kind of thing, landscaping, the lighting. We've, we've kind of addressed the landscaping plan, does meet the landscaping requirements in terms of points and opacity where that's needed. We've already addressed the foot candle issue. Just double check what I have here in the packet. But again, I think the conditions of approval, S I P is kind of tied with the G D P. So those same items, the C S M and the vacation at the right away would need to be wrapped up before the S I P is kind of finalized. But otherwise, ready to recommend approval.
Okay. Does everybody understand this sort of steps from the G D P that we just approved to the S I P? Jenny, do you want to put forward anything on, on the brick? Do you, or do you not feel strongly about that?
I mean, I would like to see if there's something that could be, I don't, I don't know if it's more of a texture or something that way on the brick. Something that will provide a little more color.
Would you allow staff to make that sort of approval?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So maybe what we could do then to move this forward is I will entertain a motion to approve the specific implementation plan. Contingent upon comments already discussed by the village planner. And a request to work with staff on a possible darker or textured brick.
I can make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. But Jenny, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Scott or Matthew? Matthew. Matthew, you had the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Up next, item F, public hearing and consideration of a recommendation to the village board. On a proposed revised general development plan for the Oregon Youth Center at one ten North Oak Street. Applicant is the village of Oregon. Elise, you want to just kind of walk us through on this one?
Yes, and give me a moment to find where this starts. All right, let's be page one seventeen of the packet. All right, so this is, this is kind of a fun one. Lynn is here too. So we can share, I'll give you a little bit of background and then have Lynn come up and talk about the, the rain garden. But so twenty eighteen, there was a plan development application for a G D P S I P at the youth center on Oak Street. That property is owned by the village of Oregon and there's an agreement with the youth center, essentially a ground lease to have their building there. In the G D P, it was written that if any elements of the site plan changed, that the G D P needed to be revised. It really just only approved that specific site that was shown there. And fast forward a couple of years, we have a sustainability committee now. They are looking to. Find locations for demonstration rain gardens to educate the public. And also have an opportunity for people to get involved in planting, taking care of them. And this was selected as a site and Lynn can talk a little bit more about this, but that's visible. Also an opportunity for some of the youth center participants to perhaps help with the maintenance and, and planting of the rain garden. So this is really an update to the G D P and S I P. Really just that addition of a rain garden would be alongside the, the Oak Street side of the youth center. We have a super simple site plan. I'll, I'll clean it up before it goes to village board. But kind of a oval-ish shape along kind of between the, the sidewalk and the, the building itself. But Lynn, maybe you can talk a little bit about the sustainability committee's goals and then also the plants that you were able to get for free. And the plan to get these in the ground.
Yeah, um, hi. Thanks for considering this. So my name is Lynn McDaniel. I am the village board representative on the sustainability committee. And in our sustainability plan, which was adopted a couple of years ago. There is a specific section encouraging green infrastructure planting. It's actually goal W four, build and promote green infrastructure projects. And within that, it is to kind of incentivize. Residential behavior in some of those green infrastructure projects. Rain gardens have been quite popular and we have a number of residents in the village that have rain gardens. As well as a lot of institutional knowledge on rain garden implementation. And so this was something that the sustainability committee felt they could put their arms around. And potentially find a suitable site for people to walk by in order to understand what a rain garden really looks like and its purpose. We were lucky to reach out to the youth center and ask if they'd be interested in being a partner with us and they are very excited about it. They hope to kind of use it as a tool to teach those who come to the youth center about rain gardens. But also something for them to maintain and to use in. center about rain gardens, but also something for them to maintain, um, and to use in, uh, the future. Uh, we have been reviewing their site, uh, they have approximately four downspouts, um, uh, for their roof and, uh, we have a sustainability committee member who is a green landscaping designer. Um, and so she has pinpointed the approximate size we need this rain garden to be in order to, uh, hold all the water from, of just one downspout, um, which will be about a hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Um, and we've also secured some plants. So we have a partnership with Dane County, um, through a couple of partnerships that we're a part of, Mam Swap being one, allows us to access some, um, programs, one being the Plant Dane Program, which we were awarded twenty free plants, uh, that are rain gardens specific. I am keeping those plants alive and in the hopes that we would get approval, we would put those in the ground, uh, in this planting. So you'll see what, um, they're showing right here is sort of a, a general, um, planting, uh, plan. We have a little bit less, um, and we have, um, less species. I think we received five of four different kinds. I have the list at home, um, but, uh, we've already kind of made our plan and how we would plant those. Um, and so the hope would be that we would receive approval. We have some partners with the public works team that could, um, uh, do some initial site preparation, and then we would actually partner with the youth center to do the planting, uh, in September.
Excellent, thank you. At this time then, I will open the public hearing. And I will, uh, ask if there is anybody in the audience that, uh, would like to have, uh, speak in the public comment on this topic. Anybody? Please come forward. Give your name and your address, please.
Anne Michael, six thirty South Woods Edge Drive. Uh, have you, um, worked with Oregon Nature Alliance? Cause we have extra plans too, so.
Great, thank you for that suggestion. We will reach out, um, but we have quite a few connections from sustainability onto Nature Alliance, so I would expect that they, um, would have some of those connections, but I'm happy to reach out and make sure.
Okay, I just wanted to like, that's thirty-two plants, you said you had twenty.
Yeah.
I feel like even if you don't get all of them this season, you could get more.
Yeah.
So, I know that's not really important, but-
No.
But just to point out that the Oregon Nature Alliance would probably have most of those, if not, I do.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
Not working.
Making connections. All right, anybody else have comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Plan commission, anybody have questions, comments, uh, anything they'd like to say or do on this?
Question for at least maybe, um, is it possible they might wanna have some small informational signing, signage to help promote this? And should we, you know, open the door for that in the G D P so we don't have to come back to this, or?
Yeah, I think signage was part of the plan, um.
Yeah, it will eventually be a part of the plan. I don't expect it to happen during this implementation phase. Um, the sustainability committee doesn't have a budget, uh, as of yet, and so, um, I, we would apply for a couple of grants, I think, for that signage. But Scott asks a good question in the sense that if we added that, would it need any approval changes?
Depending on the type of sign, I think that would be considered like an informational sign or even like a wayfinding sign, so those don't require a sign permit. If it's like a big wall sign or a big monument sign, then yeah, that would be kind of something that would be on the site plan, but if it's, I would imagine it'd be something pretty minimal.
Yeah.
I would just consider it kind of with the landscaping, so, but yeah, good point. We don't wanna have to keep dragon, be back here every time we wanna do something.
This is a learning opportunity, they can display this and promote it, so.
And just to clarify, Lynn did do like a really, a very simple just location of the rain garden, I realized it got cut off in the packet on page one forty-six, so I will do a, a better kind of update, probably the land, original landscaping plan and kind of overlay the location and dimensions of that rain garden when it gets to the village board, so it'll be memorialized better than this.
So are we, we're asked to just approve one rain garden along that, that, uh, stretch? Or are we promoting more than one, or?
Yeah, good question. So as of right now, we're only going to do, the sustainability committee will only be doing one at the youth center. Like I said, they have four downspouts, they could implement three more if they wanted to, but for our purposes, we're looking at just one, like you said, to make it informational, help people get educated. Maybe go somewhere else for another one?
Okay, Patrick?
Um, I'm just wondering, with respect to that question, is there a way we can word this to allow rain gardens, plural, so that if they wanna have a rain garden, additional one in the future, they don't have to come back?
Yeah, we could certainly change that language. Did you think, um, do you wanna just allow any like flexibility that rain gardens anywhere on the site or in the specific area along Oak Street? Or just near a downspout? And it could just be anywhere around the building, I'm not sure where all the downspouts are, but.
It'd be nice to just allow them to, to maybe expand this with staff approval and not have to go through the process of coming back here into the village board.
Yeah, I, uh, this was written a little bit about a year before I came on the board, so I probably would've allowed some flexibility with that too, with the landscaping, but it's just was written in this particular way, so.
I think that we could easily change the, um, the, the three flex, sort of flexibilities that you've got to, um, maybe add a fourth that would be final layout, design and con- concept to be dis, uh, approved by staff. For-
For the rain garden.
Yeah, for, for this and future rain gardens on this property.
And signage being part of that too, then staff could-
Right.
Could review that and approve it.
Point's already been brought up about twenty, thirty-two plants, is it kidney shaped or is it very, you know, a smiley face, you know, it's semantics, so.
I, I predict this will catch on and, you know, they wanna expand it, I wanna make it easy to do that, so.
Yeah, so, just a suggestion, maybe, um, on that item C, we can either add a D or maybe we could just say inclusion of, um, of rain gardens and then specific location and design to be approved by staff. And then it doesn't have to be just for this one, but it could be any, anywhere on the site.
Okay, so I will, um, suggest then that item C be revised to say inclusion of rain gardens. With final design, layout and concept to be decided by village staff. Is that acceptable then?
I made that motion, didn't I?
Oh, well.
Good work, Scott.
I'm sorry.
I am making that motion.
All right, uh, so Scott had the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, but I do have a, a question. Um, is there any required setback? Um, I'm running into a lot of places in the village where plants are overtaking the sidewalk, uh, and it's very frustrating as somebody that walks several miles a day. Um, and including at the youth center, which I go to once a week, their little path is overgrown, so I just don't wanna see these kinda get out of control.
Absolutely.
And so I don't know if there's a way that we limit that by saying a minimum two foot setback or, or, or what, but that, that's the only concern I have.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the specifics are, but I do know in terms of the rain garden itself, if it stretches too far away from that downspout, it's not going to be able to capture the rain effectively. So I think, I can double check, Michelle's already sort of laid out specifically where she wants things. Um, I would imagine that it's stretching farther down the building instead of towards that sidewalk.
Sure.
But it's a fair, um, concern that we, we will, um, keep in mind and address.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, item G, uh, review and possible approval of a revised specific implementation plan for the Oregon youth center at one ten North Oak Street, applicant is the Village of Oregon. Seems pretty strict, I think everybody's understanding what we're talking about here, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion with those same, uh, adjustments.
Motion by Scott, second by-
Same second.
By Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item H, public hearing and consideration of a recommendation to the village board on a proposed revised general development plan for the M S P South Main Street Senior Affordable Apartments at one six nine, two oh three and two fifteen South Main Street, applicant is M S P Real Estate, Inc. Elise?
All right, I think, um, the, the applicant wasn't able to make it here tonight, I'm just double checking, so I will, um, summarize this and then I have a statement actually from them in an email that I'll read, but, um, the, so we're at page one fifty, sorry of the packet, um. So M S P's, um, project is a, a senior affordable apartments on the South Main Street, uh, three South Main Street parcels, which are to be combined, um, coming, coming to you at a, a planning commission meeting soon, um, just south of V W Health, uh, Oregon Clinic, just a, a few parcels down from that. So, um, their G D P was approved in February of twenty-five, since then, um, we've shared with you all, they've received W I D A funding, working on some revisions to the site, um, layout and facade, and we can talk a little bit about just some of their updates here briefly. Um, but this specific revised G D P is, um, related to their parking requirement. So in the, uh, they're still, um, kinda going between fifty-five and sixty units, I'm not sure if that's been, that number has been finalized, but, um, the original G D P had seventy-five spaces for those, say, up to sixty apartment units. And, um, after further kind of rearrangement of the site and taking a look at some of their similar projects, um, they felt that sixty-eight spaces would be, um, not only fit better, but would be sufficient for the needs of their, um, the senior population that they serve, they have a lot of these other buildings. And, uh, Brian Woolsey, who works for M S P, um, sent me a statement, he asked me to read here tonight, so he just said, um, "The parking need across the one thousand three hundred and fifty-five affordable senior apartments that M S P has developed in Wisconsin since nineteen ninety-one, uh, is approximately one stall per unit. Our plan to accommodate sixty-eight total parking stalls and achieving a parking ratio of one point one nine three for our fifty-seven apartments." So that's, that's where the number is right now. Uh, this is consistent with our earliest plans for the development as far as parking demand, so just to get downing in that number, as they've rearranged the site, the parking lot has gotten a little bit smaller, there's still underground parking, so that's where the majority of that parking is. Um, our code requires one point five spaces per apartment unit regardless of bedroom size. Most of these are one and two bedrooms, um, largely single, um, single people or couples. And again, they've seen that there are other units across the state that are the same setup, um, that that is a sufficient, um, number of parking spaces, so. Um, that is the, the revision to the G D P in front of you, no other changes to setbacks, building height, density, things like that. Uh, and then maybe we can, while we're just on this topic, um, I know we still have the public hearing too, but just, uh, wanted to draw your attention to, um, I did include, as they're kind of working towards submitting the S I P and then the C S M, probably at our October meeting, they did include, um, some updated rendering, so probably page one fifty-nine has the best, um, views of that, so updated materials, um, some different treatment to the facade, um, there's renderings on the next few pages, but we can talk about the, the parking requirement, but just wanted to let you know that that was included there and if there is any feedback on whether headed with the exteriors or any other part of the site plan, I can relay that back to them.
Okay, so I think maybe what I'd like to do then is let it, um, let's discuss the, um, architecture, uh, during the plan commission comments portion, because that's really not part of what we're here for on the G D P. So I'd like to open the public hearing at this time, and then we can talk about what they're really here for, and then we'll close it, and then we can talk about that and the architecture with the plan commission, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, um, we will close the public hearing and we will get to a discussion by, uh, plan commission. Anybody have any questions, comments on this project?
Uh, I, I had one question regarding the parking, I, I don't have an issue with their request, my question is more of, um, our code. Should we have a separate code for fifty-five and older housing or senior housing? Uh, because we're running into this with the North Main Street proposal, right? Uh, one stall per unit. So is one point five that generic number inappropriate? Uh, and would it make sense that we amend the code at some point?
Yeah, you might remember, I think it was in the fall of twenty-one, we did quite a few amendments to the parking, um, sec- section of zoning code and brought that down. Um, the parking requirement was a, quite a bit higher, um, for those two and three bedroom units. And we were seeing, again, same thing with just market rate apartments, people were asking for that exception for parking, it was, we were over parking, I think, apartments, so that's a good point, you know, the senior, um, you know, housing uses, they, they vary a little bit between like senior independent living, what's being proposed at the former Oregon Manor site to like a full-blown nursing home has a lower parking requirement, cause most of those folks probably aren't driving, um, so, um, I think that's something we could definitely look into, I can definitely, um, maybe check with our, our consultants at Van de Wall, who've worked in other communities and see if they have any senior project specific, you know, callouts in zoning codes in other communities that they've worked with.
Anybody else have questions on the site request or on the architecture? And again, the architecture is just sort of as a F Y I consideration that Elise can take back to them.
Well, we're not gonna do that yet, we're covering the G D P first.
No, I think that right now with the discussion of the plan commission, we can talk about the architecture too.
Yeah, we don't have any other agenda items for this project on the, on tonight's-
I'll, I'll share a few thoughts on the architecture, if we can go to page one fifty-nine, I think shows it best, um, actually, I'd like to get there.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if we could scroll down to that middle elevation there. So, the southeast corner, uh, was, um, I forget what they called it, but it was like a community room.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't know if they've eliminated it, uh, or what, now it's more like a pergola or portico. Um, I know John didn't like the design, this to me is an improvement, they had a weird roof design with it, right? Uh, but I don't, I wanted to ask them what their intentions are, that, that doesn't help in terms of feedback for them right now. Uh, some comments that I did have on that though is that it introduced some color. If they're listening, it's a very bland building, uh, and that was about the only exciting thing that I saw on the building. Uh, they did do, um, the entryway that John asked to, to kinda make that more pronounced. Uh, they did change, the comment I made was that their gables were one color and it really emphasized the verticality. So it does look like they made some attempts, uh, to take our feedback, uh, but my, the net result is blah, it's just bland. Uh, and specifically, I looked at a, a couple things, um, particularly the gables, uh, the, the, the goal was to try to bring in some of the details, the flavor of the South Main District, and they haven't done that at all. Uh, I don't know if that gable design is an attempt, uh, it's a weak attempt. It looks like, uh, a one-dimensional, very flat gable. If that was a traditional detail, that would project outward into space. It would be, uh, really a collar tie with, with support structure for the roofs, uh, whereas right now it's very flat. Uh, one of the things that I did looking at the design, and I understand why they might choose to do that for cost, you bring it out into three dimensions, you've got the potential for birds building nests, you know, I, I get it. Um, but the color doesn't do anything, and so I played around and just sketched it in with the color of the staircases. And so I asked them to do that with their model, so take that dark brown of the staircase and make that little design that color, and it starts to unify the design a little bit. It doesn't totally improve it, but it helps. Uh, so I, I think they can do better. I mean, it, they have to be sensitive to this historic neighborhood that they're going up against. Uh, they're already very tall, uh, and I've looked at that site- Uh they're already very tall, uh and I've looked at that site, and there is some buffer with vegetation, um again, they've broken up the facade to de-emphasize that verticality, but they do need to be sensitive to some of those details in that district to win my positive appraisal.
Excellent, anybody else have any questions, comments on the site or the building?
I have one thought, as I was walking in that area the other day, I think if there was something they could do with the patios and with those fences or on the porches to tie in better with the porches, because when I walk through, and I live in an old house too, the porch to me is one of the things that really helps make those houses stand out, and instead of having, you know, a s- a strict metal fence around, I don't, I don't know if there's something that could be done to help kind of make that seem like that ties it a little better, I don't know if that would help, but I think it might add some a little bit more character, if that's.
So you're thinking not just the like ground floor porches, but?
The ones that are up high, you know, like if they're, or even if like the col- you know, columns instead of thin metal um braces for where they're stacked, just something to make it seem more like a a porch than than the little fences, I don't, that was a thought I had, I don't know.
More welcoming look, yeah.
I think everybody is kind of hitting on some really great points, um I think uh Jenny, to your point, I think that um the thing that makes those porches not feel comfortable is the fact that they're just a four by four that comes down, there's no real scale to having a base to those, I think it would be good to have something that added a little bit more chunkiness to the bottom, whether it's masonry, whether it be built up wood, even if it's only up to four feet, but something that adds a little heft to those columns would be uh wonderful and add a little bit more texture at that human level uh up against the street. Patrick, I think that I agree with you completely, um I think that the trellis at the community room is a nice change, um and I see that they tried to do that right right at that location, but at that location, it comes off extremely weak because it just seems like it's tacked on. Um I think that it would go a long way to having that entry on the backside, if you're gonna do that trellis, pump it up a little bit, whether it comes out towards the parking lot a little bit more, or if they want to put another gabled feature like they've got facing the street, um I just think that that helps to mark that entry a little bit more clearly. And I would like to see uh the two little awnings that they've, the eyebrows, as I call them, over the two doors that are right there in the, that you're looking at, left hands uh right there. Nope, nope. The doors, it's right there, yep, those little eyebrows, uh it's a feature that's never shown anywhere else on the architecture of this building. Uh again, I think that if they did that in a trellis feature, um they don't look like they're even coming off three feet enough to offer protection as you come out that door, so they're really not they're not doing anything, so make them something that begins to tie the architecture together, whether that be a trellis or something like that, and the trellis is my opinion, should have a little bit of an overhang, um they should have some cantilever to them, um which would help to add a little bit of texture to this building, because I think that's what's making it come off flat. So that's the architecture side of it that you can give to them, um anybody have any comments on the site plan request, the real GDP aspect of this? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to approve uh the revisions to the GDP as described in the um packet that was provided by Elise in red, is that understood, straightforward? Anybody want to make that motion? So Matthew made the motion, is there a second? Patrick, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven, aye, review and possible recommendation to the village board of a certified survey map for the proposed multifamily development at fifty two fourteen County Highway CC to dedicate land for right of way along County Highway CC, the applicant is Liberty Park LLC. Somebody want to come forward and give us a little bit, or Elise, you want to start us off, or how do you want to handle this?
I'll start this off and then hand it over to to Brian and his team to to add in some details, so we're we're almost here at the end of this long addenda, uh this is another item that has a CSM, a GDP, this is a revised GDP and a SIP altogether. So uh just to review, this is uh fifty two fourteen County Highway CC, um formerly known as the Thatcher Property, it's between Mulligan's and Methodist Church, um so pretty close here to Village Hall, um this property is still in the town of Oregon, so it would still need to be annexed, so all of these approvals are obviously contingent on that annexation, so they would just sort of hang in limbo until that annexation is approved, um the CSM is for a dedication of future right of way for Jefferson Street, so it would align the the frontage with where village parcels are, so bump it back a little bit. Our plan right now is to do the the county jurisdictional transfer project in twenty twenty eight, right Lauren, for Jefferson Street?
Twenty twenty nine, I believe.
Yeah, now we're on the odd years, everything got shifted a little bit, so twenty nine, so not too far out now, um and incorporation of multi-use path sidewalks, a whole redesign of the section of that road is is coming at that point, so the CSM serves that purpose to give that additional right of way, um the revised GDP, you know, this will be the next agenda item, but just do you have us all on front of you, this is just a correction um from last year's GDP, um they had requested forty five feet, I wrote forty one feet on the ordinance, it's just something we didn't catch, so there's no additional height added to the building, it's just um clarifying that that was requested to be forty five feet, and then the SIP is um in the site plan element, they have um have the thumbs up from fire department, um working with uh Lauren and our consulting village engineer on just finalizing some of the utility plans, uh the CSM again has some minor editing um comments to wrap up, but nothing substantial that we don't feel comfortable with bringing it to you all tonight to recommend conditional approval on wrapping up annexation and all that good stuff.
Excellent. Anything you would like to say on the CSM, we're gonna keep it to the CSM for right now? You're accepting of the right of way of? All right, so uh the motion in front of us right now is the review and possible recommendation to the village board of a CSM. Um so uh is anybody here that want to make some recommendation to village board of that CSM?
Make that motion subject to the staff comments on CSM.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Phil, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item J, the public hearing in consideration of a recommendation to the village board on a proposed revised general development plan for the proposed multifamily development at fifty two fourteen County Highway CC, the applicant is Liberty Park LLC. Um Elise already kind of gave us the staff uh report on this and the consultant report, so at this time, I will open the public hearing. And is, would you like to give us a?
I'm James McFadden, the architect.
Okay.
Um one, the GDP is basically unchanged from, uh again, the GD, what we've done is right now, we've updated the et, we we've evolved the GDP from what we presented, you know, previously to the SIP, and the SIP is standing in for the GDP at this particular point in time. So um if we want to go to start with the the perspective, the um the view from the southwest, I don't know which page that would be.
John, are you okay jumping into the site comments, or do you want to just focus on the the revised GDP for the?
I'd like to stick with the GDP at this.
Okay, so the GDP, I don't think any, uh the the SI, the G, the SI, there's nothing changed with the GDP, all we're doing is the GDP is correcting that clerical error, so there is no change, so I have nothing to say.
Okay, that may be the case, but we still need to go through the process. All right, so if you have no more comments, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will leave it up to the planning commission, um as we've already discussed, really, it's kind of a clerical error kind of thing, and a little bit of housekeeping. Are there any questions uh of staff or the applicant on the GDP revisions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve um the GDP revisions for the proposed multifamily development at fifty two fourteen County Highway CC. Jenny has the motion, anybody want a second?
Second.
Patrick will second, all those in favor of the GDP signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item K, review and possible approval of the specific implementation plan for the proposed multifamily development at fifty two fourteen County Highway CC, the applicant is Liberty Park LLC. Take it away.
If we could go to this, I think this, we could start right here with this um uh this perspective, you know, to 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 uh elucidate the uh the change, the evolution of what was uh presented and what you just approved. We did two things, you know, starting from the very front, um we underestimated slightly the um the mentions needed for the uh retention pond, the soils weren't nearly as good uh as we had hoped and whatever else, you know, so what that required is we actually pushed the building up the hill just a little bit, which again, fa- fairly insignificantly, the big thing from the site perspective is actually that forced this to relocate the entry into the lower parking uh from the front of the building, from Jefferson Street from the south, you know, to the side, actually is aesthetically, this turns out to our mutual benefit, because, but basically, you're no longer looking at the uh uh the parking entry and the and its and the garage door, you know, from the street. The second thing with the building itself is actually paid very close attention to what you told us last time, last time uh in the SIP, we had a masonry layer, and then it was like a layer cake, we're building up, we had a long building, admittedly a long building, we had a a layer cake which did nothing to, it accentuated the length of the building, you know, um so what we we turned, we are two things, one go up, you know, you know, which we did, you know, vary the the colors, bring in some color into in into the into the building. Uh so we did that, so right now we have a masonry, uh a masonry base which is still there, uh but what we've done is, and what we've done with the residential floors above, we've actually pushed those out a foot or a foot and a half, depending on where you are on the elevation, you know, so that they, rather than having just continuing straight up, we're projecting out so that the residential portion of the building appears to float above the masonry. Then the second thing that we did is actually, instead of laying things out this way, as you could see from the uh perspective, we create a series of columns, and we brought in color, you know, we brought in and uh on the ends, some very, very bright red, uh the bright red will be not, will be a synthetic stucco, it won't be an ephesus, it will be uh synthetic stucco on a hard base, so we don't have any of those moisture problems that, you know, that that people encounter, and it leads to all sorts of lawsuits and things. So it better be a bright red uh synthetic stucco, and then in between will be alternating colors of of green uh of green siding. And again, all those will be punctuated by the deep uh recesses for uh for for the balconies, again, we've tried to do from your very first informational building, you had asked for, make us, make, allow us to see where the entry is, so what we've done before and we've, we've actually emphasized even more, uh put some additional height uh on the entry, they've giving it that red color, then we've taken that same sort of thought and putting it at the four ends of the building, so we actually have now four points, the four corners of the building and and the center, actually, six points on the other side also, you know, to basically to break that building down, to see it as a a series of columns rather than one long layer cake, if you will. Um on the back, we, the int- the inside basically is more or less the same, we've lost a couple of parking stalls because of the change in the uh in the entry and our need to provide some uh space for our maintenance staff uh in in internally. But you know, again, that is basically unchanged, we added, we're by moving things around, we're able to add one more unit to the uh to the apartment, to the apartment building, the reason really for that was, is actually to provide some on the other side, opposite the uh the entry, to provide some additional windows looking out over the church, and to provide a nicer visage looking in that direction. The second big change from when we first came in, the the townhouses were always an afterthought, yes, we, you know, we wanted to provide a mix of units, so we have one studio of one and two bedroom units in the apartment buildings, and those, and we were gonna have three bedroom rental townhouses available to, you know, to provide a a complement of uh of 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 options. Yeah, an initial um uh informational meeting is that, give some pizzazz to that, you know, so we made meager efforts to re-change the roof line and ba ba ba, you know, but not really uh enough, what we've done, since since the SIP, what we've done is actually we totally rethink things. Same, absolutely same footprint, but instead of uh rental townhouses, um we're gonna be condominiums, condominium, so again, try to give them a little bit more size, give them a little bit more style, instead of just two stories, it would be two sto- two and a half stories to make those, uh and again, bring in some colors, you know, in into that, before, I think we had it mostly uh uh an olive, olive green, you know, but now to take the two co- two green colors that we've had, and then add a dark, a dark black color to the siding. So that would be, you know, the the sec- the second big change to uh to the, if we want to go to some of the other elevations, we could um yeah, so that would be, you know, we have a mix of um of um, you know, a mix of of you know, pitch roofs, you know, again, increase the pitch of the roof, you know, provide a different variety of pitches, uh roofs, roofs coming you know, towards the viewer as they come up from Jefferson Street. You know, but, and again, try to bring in some real color so that it really has something to uh stand out for, the colors are selected because the owners that are buying just to the north, um basically, they they tend to like darker colors, you know, that seems to be of late you know, what is most desired with the white trim, so we're basically building on what we know that residents in this very specific geographical area, you know, are are, you know, are desirous of, but basically, that's the change in the architecture, and I think a lot of it was prompted by, you know, comments that we, you know, we heard right here. We do, again, if that's, I think my my ta- take on the architect, the, I think the rest of it is pretty much this, the growth, the the street is the same, the parking a- access is the same, everything else is basically unchanged from the SIP. There is one issue um that we like to seek relief on from what is in the uh the staff packet, and that is um our discussions with this, with the village engineer, he is requesting that the, when this is a a private development with a private street, you know, uh from the owner's perspective, and what the the village engineer is asking, that we put in a native, a water main that would be, after we would put it in, it would be dedicated to the uh to the village, and then that we give to the village easement so that they could service that uh that main at at their convenience. The owner very much opposes this, because one, he would like to basically put in a private main, a private main uh with the thought that, one, and it's a, it's uh uh, and then he would like to retain ownership and responsibility to maintain that main over time, and the reason for this is that when, if and when the main ever needs to be upgraded or 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 maintained or anything else, that it is done in such a way that the prior, that we prioritize. or maintained or anything else, that it is done in such a way that they prioritize, that we prioritize the safety and the accessibility of the residents that are going to be occupying of the space. And he feels that might be a little compromised if it's given to a third party, in this instance, you know, the village water service, whoever does, you know, the utility. But that's just a relief that we would like to have from the, you know, from the staff report.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Elise, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, and I'm sure Lauren would probably be the best person to address the utility question, but just as far as approvals, to be clear, the planning commission doesn't approve the utility plans, it's ultimately.
It's just a condition.
Yep, yep, so but we can, we can talk about some of the reasoning for that, and again, that's one of those items, as I mentioned, that we're still kind of finalizing. Review back and forth with them, again, Lauren and her team felt comfortable, you know, that the plans were far enough to bring to you all tonight, but I know that that the main size has been a point of discussion, so maybe Lauren, you can shed a little light on that.
Sure. So the, the upsizing to our standard minimum water main, which is an eight-inch main, and the dedication to the public of that through an easement, through a private drive, is somewhat consistent with the way that we've been approaching these in recent developments, probably the most, most recent one that comes to mind is the eight-thirty-one and eight-seventy-one Oregon Center Drive, just to the east-west of this property. We tend to prefer that for, it sounds like, very similar reasons, albeit on the other side of the table as the developer is talking about, we like having that control, we like having those eyes on that water main so that if something does go wrong, particularly in an instance where, like in this case, you have some very large buildings, we can get in there quickly and make sure that it is taken care of to our standards. So that is kind of the request, it's not out of keeping with how we've been approaching these in similar developments recently.
Lauren, maybe can you talk about when those mains do need to be serviced? How does kind of access and safety come into play as far as making sure residents of, are able to get in and out of their development?
Certainly. Well, anytime we do any work, I will say that the safety of the public is our top priority. We, our staff is very, very familiar and experienced in dealing with, say, water main breaks. We have a procedure for calling folks in, in the situation that it is required. We do have procedures for going and notifying residents that are affected. We, of course, if it's in a busy area, will set up signage as well as a detour for any residents that have to get in and out. We typically staff these breaks such that we have sufficient staff to not only be in the ground fixing the water main, but also at the surface watching our staff, but also able to communicate with the public. So we're, we're very comfortable with that process and it has worked very well. And like I said, safety is a top priority for us anytime we do this kind of work.
Okay. Planning commission, any comments, questions? Of the SIP?
Just with respect to your design. I appreciate all your attempts to incorporate our feedback, it's anything but bland. Which is what a word I used earlier tonight. I really like the condo colors. The, the red is like, wow, it's like you've almost used the entire color palette. Since you have a model, one recommendation I have is substitute, just try on the model, substitute the red for the blue. The corner towers, instead of red, just be blue, just take a look at it.
Oh, sure.
I, I think you have too much going on, right? You've definitely broken up the linearality of the building, but it's, it's, it's a lot. So just take a look at that, that'd be my only request.
Blue, actually, red, sun doesn't like red. You know, so blue, blue, you know, might be an appropriate.
I think it just might bring everything together as one development.
Very friendly amendment, yeah, very friendly.
Anybody else? Patrick, you hit on exactly what I was going to say. Because, yeah, I was going to bring up that exact point, this, this could go pink, it could go salmon, it could go twelve ways from Sunday, you don't know. Yeah, red's not, red and sun aren't good, so I like your recommendation to go blue. I applaud you for listening to what we suggest, I think that it's a better project, I think that the roof line looks better, I think that the layered cake looks better. I think you've got a much better definition of a project. And I think that it's a more successful project overall because of that. My only, Lauren, is, is an eight-inch, is that for just this project, or is that for any main that comes into a site?
That's for any main, that's our minimum main diameter at this point.
That's really big, that's a lot of water. I mean, for this project, I get it, you know, you're servicing two buildings and one of them is big. That's a, that's a big pipe.
I do want to clarify, because I'm guessing that you might be thinking of something different. It's not for any services that come in, so it's something like the MSP, for instance, project. That would be something that a plumber would, because it's coming off a true main, a plumber would size that service. But any main that we're taking ownership of or constructing in private, or in public construction, that would be an eight-inch.
Got it, okay, alright. So with that being said, we have in front of us a specific implementation plan. There are five items that are flexibilities that are being requested. And the village planner has made two recommendations on top of that. And also, one thing I forgot to mention with the GDP is that all of this is contingent upon the annexation approval. That has not yet happened, so, just so that everybody understands. So is there a motion to approve this contingent upon the specific implementation plan? And comments and flexibilities in the village planner's comments?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second and a question. Just so I'm clear, we're going to proceed with the village engineer's advice, not make a change.
That's correct.
Alright, thank you.
We did not take, break that out, thank you, Phil. So we have a motion and a second, does everybody understand? Yes.
Just want to clarify, did we decide that the red would be changed to blue, or are we just looking?
We'll change.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about we put that into though, the recommendation, will you modify?
Yeah, modify.
And you'll modify your second, Phil?
Yes.
Okay, alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
And we seriously thank you for your contributions to get us to this point. We did listen.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck with the project. The time was well spent.
Item L, as we mentioned, is postponed, so we will move on to item eight. Director, do we want to take a break, or do we want to just push the resistance?
We're almost there.
Yeah.
Alright, so, item eight, director, community development report, status of development projects, Cliff notes, please.
Alright, I will try to make it brief. I'll start with Oak Street, because that's the one that everybody is very concerned about, and fair enough. It is, it is moving ahead, it is on a delayed schedule from where we wanted it to be, but per our request and the contractor's hard work, they did get the apron for the bus lot for another wooden peri-view poured prior to school starting on Tuesday. And with a few back and forths between our team and the school district, they've been relatively able to get in and out with little issue. So we continue to be in very close contact with the school and work with them as much as we can as we try to finish this up. Likely about two weeks of utilities left, and after that, quite frankly, it gets a lot easier and a lot cleaner. So we're really looking forward to that. Our next big milestone as far as kind of public access is the Fall Fury Tournament at the end of September. We are working with the contractor to have Oak Street not paved, but rocked in and ready for traffic and open and clear of all debris by the time that tournament rolls around, so that we can support that as best we can. Private development, Greenview Preserve is starting this week, phase three. So that is ongoing, Autumn Ridge Phase Three B to our southeast is also ongoing. And let's see, I think that's, it's probably the major visible projects, the well projects are kind of plugging along. Doing the best they can, Martin, Martin Shanks's son is keeping a close eye on the excavators for us up at well six, so we know that one's going well. And the wastewater treatment plant is, is kind of moving along, they do have the foundation port and starting on the walls for our big wet well there. So making a lot of progress, even if it's not always visible.
Lauren, quick, not to add one thing more, but I came to my attention, some of the planning commission wasn't aware of some of the design work we're doing for the Alpine and Jefferson Street intersection, could you just update them on that and the timeline for that construction?
Yeah, absolutely. So that intersection is one of our two major roadway projects next year. The second of those being East Lincoln Street, which is a federally funded project in part, but going back to Alpine and Jefferson here. We are at about sixty percent design, we are kind of working through some real estate questions and starting to get into the details. So our plan is to host a public meeting here in September, late Oc, or I'm sorry, early October at the absolute latest, but we're targeting later September to walk through what we have and what we're proposing. It's, it's quite similar, kind of in structure, it's not going to be a huge change, aside from it will be far more stable from a stormwater perspective, and of course, it will be signalized. So it will be set up to accommodate that Jefferson Street project, the big one coming in twenty-twenty-nine. So there's going to be some nice flow into that project, but stay tuned for that public meeting coming up at the end of this month.
Thank you, Lauren, is, and I don't know if you can answer this or want to answer this at that point, is they, is that intersection you'd mentioned is signalized? Are they putting islands then for future growth and expansion on that as well?
I don't want to give you the wrong answer, so I can look at the plans as I sit right now and get you an answer on that one.
Yeah, I just, I know that that's a busy road and
It is.
Crossing it by somebody, it'd be nice to have a respite in the middle if they have to.
Yeah, I'll take a look at the plans and get you an answer on that, but that's good feedback, thank you.
Thank you, anything else? Alright, moving on, note for us that the upcoming planning commission meeting dates are October second and November sixth, so adjust your calendars, and Elise?
John, just, just a reminder from Joy and I, we do appreciate if you can let us know of any planned absences or unplanned absences as soon as possible, since we do have lots of public hearings and things, so if we have a quorum issue, we'd like to know with as much advance notice, so that's, that's that.
Okay, alright.
Thank you for letting us know when you have done so in the past.
And then the last thing is the planning staff meeting agenda for August fourteenth, which is included in your packet for your viewing pleasure. Items for future meetings, we don't have any, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Phil, you in on this?
He's already gone.
Motion is, motion is approved, we are adjourned.
You don't bring it, just let you go to the bathroom, you get back.